The call, Escanaba City Council meeting April 21st, 2022 to order. Mr. Demay, please call roll.
Councilor Moore.
Here.
Councilor Boshaw. Councilor DuBord.
Here.
Councilor Floth.
Here.
Mayor Amel.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I can make a motion to excuse Councilman Boshaw for his absence.
Seeking support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. DuBord. At this time, seeking approval, correction to the minutes. We have the option, would we like to approve them en masse or individually?
Motion to, yeah, motion to approve all of the minutes.
All of them.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. At this time, any approval and/or adjustments to the current agenda as written. Some more?
We need to pull number six. That issue has changed, and we need to add professional services agreement for a city attorney. And then, as far as unfinished business, I would like to postpone the jail project discussion, decision, based solely on the fact that we do not have an official legal opinion yet. And it's because of the lawyer shuffle that's happened between the county and the city. So we do not have a written opinion yet. And the other thing is, is I don't think we can ethically vote tonight without one of our council members here.
And you wish to make that as a combined motion? Or would you like to make them separately?
Combined is good.
And my question for you on the, on the number six. You stated you want it to be a professional services agreement for city attorney, and that that is exactly what is written. So you want it struck and then re-added exactly as written?
The clerk and I discussed this, and he said that it really becomes, because it's a different person, it becomes a new motion. So we'll have to strike the one that's on there.
Well, you're simply changing what was in the original agenda. So in order to change what's in the original agenda, we should amend what was submitted, even though you are correct.
Could we amend that language and just substitute?
That is exactly what I'm asking for right now.
All you're amending basically was, like he said, the person that is going to be.
So we are amending the name of the attorney?
Yeah.
That's much clearer, thank you.
Okay.
And are we going to name said attorney, or is this a mystery?
The firm is LJ Vogler PLC. The attorney, the primary attorney is Lisa Vogler.
And that will be the attorney or someone from the firm?
She'll be, she'll be the attorney.
Karen, if you're willing to amend your motion a little bit for the unfinished business, I would still would like a discussion at least.
Um.
Everybody's here.
I like, I think that, you know, everybody's here, we could have a discussion. I just, I just think it's improper to have a vote until we know what we're doing legally. I think it's important for everybody here to know that we're all, we're all really anxious to make a decision. It's not, we're trying, not trying to, you know, kick can down the road. It's all about the legal part of it now. And, and it's just a matter of what happened with the attorneys. It's just a shuffle, and we're going to have an attorney at the next meeting, and we'll have an opinion. And then we can go from there to do the proper thing.
I'm good with just having a discussion, if you're good with that.
That's okay.
All right, so your current motion recommends that agenda item number six, approval professional services agreement for city attorney services, will read LJ Vogler as attorney, correct?
Yep.
And then, we are also limiting unfinished business, item number one, to discussion only, correct? Mr. Demay, you have this all recorded?
Yeah.
Give you a moment, because that was a little bit like a tennis match up here.
Yeah.
You have a motion on the floor?
I will second her motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any further approval and/or adjustments to the agenda as is currently amended? Hearing none. At this time, are there any brief public comments on items pertaining to the agenda? Please approach the microphone, state your name, place of residence, and you will have three minutes.
Kelly Vangenhoven, Bark River, Michigan. I just have a question or more of a statement regarding number six, agenda item, professional service agreement for city attorney. In the results of a FOIA request that I placed last month requesting emails to and from Patrick Jordan, to and from Karen Moore's personal email, there is an email dated Monday, December 20th, 2021, that says, Karen, just prior to the meeting last Thursday, John Bergman handed me the required 30-day notice to quit their contract. Hiring the city attorney falls under my list of responsibilities. When I did the RFP in late winter, early spring of 2019, the only response I got was for Bergman and Nastoff. I plan on skipping the RFP this time around as I have an experienced, very capable attorney in mind. In fact, I've spoken to her, and she is interested. The ordinance that the city attorney is required to be present at all city council meetings, for one, I don't believe that is necessary. Maybe it used to be, and it was much easier with BK Peterson. The attorney I have in mind lives and works in northern Michigan. She can quote-unquote "attend" council meetings virtually, and I believe the last two years have taught us that presence can include virtual, virtual presence. I'd like to move quickly and have Lisa Vogler in place at the end of the 30-day notice given by Nastoff and Bergman. We have labor issues pending that require a labor attorney be present. There is also the matter of the jail redevelopment and the contracts that will be a part of that. There is also another issue I'd rather not put in writing, but would be happy to talk about it if you'd like. I would just like the council to make sure that our, correct, RFPs were put out for all attorneys. And I would also like to question why Patrick Jordan is sending emails to Karen Moore's personal email account and not her city account. Thank you.
Any further brief public comment on items pertaining to the agenda?
Good afternoon, Steve Kido, 512 South 10th Street, Escanaba. Just two comments on the agenda. Regarding the budget, I was very happy to see that South 10th Street is in the upcoming budget. So thank you for that. However, I'm sure all of us are aware that we have many city streets in dire need of repairs. Fifth Avenue South, Washington Avenue, just to name a few. So I would encourage the administration and the council to continue to seek out grant opportunities with the IIJA, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. There are many opportunities for grants, so look at that deeply. Secondly, regarding ordinance 1260, the side-by-side ordinance that's being proposed. I think it's a wise idea to allow the side-by-sides on city streets. This is going to allow us to tap into the ever-growing power sports market, allow our businesses to capture the fuel dollars, the dollars that people are spending at restaurants. But I see a couple of issues with the ordinance as proposed. It doesn't address ATVs or ORVs, it just specifically says side-by-sides. So my questions are, if I were riding a four-wheeler on the Hurbinaba Trail, and I came into the city at the trailhead, must I stop there? Can I go down to the Meyer gas station and get gas? Can I get, can I go down to the Drifters and get lunch or dinner? The ordinance simply doesn't say anything about ORV or ATVs. In addition, my neighbor, his son rides the four-wheeler up and down the city sidewalks, sidewalks, around the block, up and down the alley at high rates of speed. Again, this isn't addressed in the current ordinance. In addition, the ordinance, as it reads, it says side-by-sides shall operate on city streets, shall not operate on city streets from December 1st through March 31st. But it also references accessing the ice for the lake. So during those December months, how do I get to the lake if I can't ride on city streets? Another contradiction is in the definitions part, it references utility. So it recognizes that the side-by-sides have a utility feature. Then why can't we use them on city streets or to plow? You know, as it reads now, I would have to stop at the end of my sidewalk. I can't be on the city streets during those December months. So if I were a good Samaritan, like my, one of my neighbors was this past winter, he plowed the alley, he cleaned out the end of my driveway, well, there would be a $500 fine, as the city ordinance reads today, because you can't be on city streets December 1st through March 31st. So my recommendation is that clear up the ordinance to address some of the contradictions. It should address ATV and ORV in the definition section, and then it should make allowances for snow removal activities. Thank you.
Any further brief public comment on items pertaining to the agenda at this time?
Jared Drown, Terrace Bay Hotel. I do appreciate coming from an abundance of caution in regards to the jail site property, seeking legal counsel. There also is a cost there. And I guess I'd like to explain and share that with you. Hilton has been holding the site, not just for us, but for this parcel since October. And we've been in constant communication with them. And they now have interests from not, not Red Deer, but other parties interested in possibly building on the highway, namely Dial. And while this would be great for the city, it's a loss of one of the two major hotel brands being able to be built, not just by us, but by any developer on this site. They'll only build one Hilton property in a community of this size. And so, I mean, we have relationships with people in Marriott, it's not the end of the road for a high-end hotel, but delaying does have costs, and I would just like to point that out. So I would like to encourage the council to move on a vote tonight. Hilton has specifically told us that we'll give you guys to the end of April. They said this a month ago, in all honesty, maybe they give us a little more flexibility. But it's not us, it's them waiting on the site when they have, namely Dial Properties, interested in possibly the owners of the mall, doing a development out there on the highway. So while they'll be great for the city, it'd be a loss for the jail site, and it'd be the loss for downtown to wait. Thank you.
Hello, Kline T. Berry, live at South 17th Street and First Avenue. I totally agree with his side-by-side comment, except I think that we can already ride our dirt bikes and four-wheelers in the north area with headlights and a speedometer, or at least we always have, and no one's ever bothered us about it, but and my, my brother-in-law lived in Northtown, and he plowed everybody all the time, so. But yeah, it should really include all of them in the paperwork, though I guess it doesn't exist, but I think it already might. No, that's the only, that's it.
Any further brief public comment on items pertaining to the agenda at this time? Hearing none. Moving on to unfinished business, item number one as amended, discussion on possible awarding of agreement for the old jail chamber site redevelopment.
Council discussion on jail development and/or chamber site redevelopment.
I think I would agree with Jared, but I also agree with the legal piece of it as well. I wish we didn't have to postpone it. I really wish that we could move forward and, and get this moving as fast as we could. There's just a lot of unknowns right now within the legal side. And at this point, we do not have a legal attorney, and there's been a big delay there. And that is an apology to all the developers that are interested in this RFQ. I would hopefully say that if we do not have an attorney, is there a way the city can go elsewhere to get an illegal opinion? Because I'd like to get this moving fast. If we, if Patrick, you feel like we could still get a legal opinion and try to keep this moving?
We'll do something to keep it moving.
Okay.
Yeah.
I really think that we cannot delay any longer, and I, and like I agreed with Karen, discussion, okay? And I really think this is a good opportunity for the people of the citizens of Escanaba to move forward with a project that is going to hit many of the needs of Master Plan. And I'm completely supportive of this project, and I want to see this moving forward. My opinion is, either with this council, is if we can get a legal opinion as soon as possible on this, then I would like to have a special meeting. If not, we have to wait till the next council meeting on May 5th, then so be it. But if we can get it sooner, then I would request or ask that we do a special meeting to determine an award or decide on who we decide to go with.
So Patrick, do you think that we could get somebody in the next couple, I mean, by next week?
Yeah, if, if we can approve, I sent, I emailed you all the retainer.
Yeah, that's my question, so we have it on the agenda for.
Yeah, if we approve that tonight, I'm going to inundate her tomorrow with stuff. I haven't sent her really any of this stuff yet on the, on this issue. I'm going to send everything to her tomorrow, so she can start reading up on it and come, come to some kind of opinion. Or just, or just be the watchful legal eye as agreements are drawn up to make sure that the city's protected and everything's done right.
But if we decide not to go with her tonight, is there somebody out there that we can get an answer to?
I did an RF, I can look for somebody, I can possibly, I would, if that's the case, Lisa has a good, a really good real estate property attorney in her, in her office, and his resume is in the packet I sent you too. But I would find just a good property, real estate attorney to, to look into this. I was very, very disappointed this week when I, and I notified you all that.
I do have a question on this, Mr. Jordan. Pertaining to what Mr. Floth asked you specifically about, is it possible for us to find some other legal counsel? Have there been other matters that the city has dealt with since Mr. Burton's resignation until now, that we have received legal advice from someone?
Yeah, on a labor issue.
I'm sorry?
On a, on a labor issue, we brought in a, and I can't remember his name right now, we brought in another attorney to, who specialized in labor.
Okay.
To, to kind of guide through this.
So it is possible for us to find a lawyer if we try really hard, right?
If we, if we, if we need to, yes.
Okay. And then, I guess your qualification was that it's a, it was a labor lawyer on a labor issue.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming that our, our expediency on Attorney Vogler here is because that specialty is in commercial and city municipal properties?
I believe so, yeah. I have to read his resume again.
No, no, I'm talking about the one that, that you've been recommending.
Yeah.
So I mean, you are familiar with the resume of Lisa Vogler, correct?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Okay, so the question I had for you was, the specialty, I'm assuming, is, is municipal law or municipal properties or?
Her specialty is in municipal law, and she has a partner in her, in the Vogler, LJ Vogler firm that specializes in real estate law.
So in this case, our current situation would like the firm or the lawyer, because earlier you stated it was going to be the lawyer.
It's the firm, she specified the firm.
So we may not always get the same lawyer, is that correct?
No, she's going to be, she's going to be our primary attorney, just like Bergman was our primary attorney.
I'm sorry I'm asking so many questions, it's just.
John Bergman was assigned to us.
Tiny parcels. No, it's, no, I'm admitting that I need things explained to me. I apologize, everyone else in the room is probably further ahead than I am.
When we, when we, when we took on Nastoff and Bergman, it was, the, the office assigned John Bergman to us.
Okay.
And that's, it'll be the same situation here, it's LJ Vogler is the name of the firm, but it will be Lisa Vogler that is working as our attorney, unless it's a specialty that she needs, and she'll have her other partners look at it. Which is, which gives depth and breadth and everything to her firm.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you for clearing that up. Further discussion on unfinished business, item number one. Other than my last question to Mrs. Moore, if this suggestion, if we, if somehow something happens to new business item number six, and we do have to seek legal opinion elsewhere, do you feel comfortable with that?
Sure, but I'm also confident in that Lisa has already agreed to be our attorney, and, and the papers have been drawn up. So I'm confident that this is going to happen.
Okay.
Confident in Patrick's decision, and, and based on the information that he sent all of us, she is very qualified and with the backup of her firm. So I think we're, we're in the, going in the right direction, and I think everybody should know that, so we're moving towards a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other delays that these developers need to worry about, Mr. Patrick? Jordan?
Not that, not that I can think of. I don't know what, I'm sure they're dialed into, I want to say DEQ, what's it called now, Eagle? Into the, the Brownfield Grant Cycle and that whole bucket of money that's in Lansing. That's, that's a state schedule.
Yep, nope, they've been in contact with Eagle representatives going through that, and Brownfield representatives as well, so.
A delay maybe, and I don't, we have to look at, are we fully staffed? Where's Matt, he's in the audience somewhere. We're fully staffed on the Brownfield authority, and I think we may be short a person, or two even.
One vacancy.
One vacancy, okay, that's good then.
Any further discussion on this item? Postponed. Thank you. Moving on, new business, item number one, setting of public hearing.
Sorry.
That's a lot of letters and numbers, FY 2022 to 2023 budget, May 5th, 2022.
Administrations requesting city council set May 5th, 2022 at 7:00 PM as the fourth public hearing on the proposed 2022, 23 city fiscal year budget. And there will be one more public hearing to follow that.
I do have a question, and I guess I'll lead on this one, Mr. Boshaw's absence here. This handout that we just received this evening is amendments?
No, these are, the amendments are in the new, the fresh budget that you received.
Is this, so this one's amended different from the other one that we have?
That contain, yeah, it is. It contains changes that were made during the budgeting, public hearings that we had. There were only very minor changes. And I don't think there are any changes to the general fund. So the, it's still the same, or close to the same. These, these are just what Ron asked me for. This can be worked toward, what would a picture of a balanced budget look like? And this is only part of it, and it still is a deficit.
Okay, these are included in this copy?
No, I haven't cut them out of the budget, these are just.
This is a suggestion, this is the same thing we had last time.
Yeah.
Just doesn't have any my script on it.
There's a lot of very essential stuff in here that we cut out, that I cut out, just to, just to work toward balancing the budget. But they're just, can't think of the word, it's just a a summary, I guess, of what it would look like if we did this.
A prediction of what it's going to look like if we remove these items, or take them out?
Yeah. And we haven't touched personnel, and the only thing left to cut is people. And we're so thin already, that it's going to be difficult, you know, to do that, so.
Yes, so these are all just cuts that you gave us on this paper that we have here?
Yes.
All right.
But they have not been cut out of the budget.
Oh, I understand.
Yep. And a lot of this is just stuff that we wanted to do and kicked the can down the road for several years. Some of it is essential. Doors on the fire station are pretty essential. There's really, this is very, this, this is very little, you know, there's no fluff in this budget, there's a couple pieces of equipment, you know, for so department heads can actually do their jobs, take care of the trails, and mow, and do all those kinds of things that they have to do.
I would like to see this item actually postponed for the next meeting to allow all of council to have more time to digest this, since it was just presented this evening.
Do I email it to you guys too, today? I will, and I'll email it to Ron too, so he has it.
I would really like us to have time to digest this and look at it more carefully. It is why we do have the, the work sessions, and this is, that's when I would have liked to have seen these cuts suggested. So just to allow us time to digest this, understand it, perhaps ask you questions about it in a in a format where maybe you're more prepared to provide more information to us, we can make a better decision. So.
And I think it's important that we look at the projected budgets that was put out for three years.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it's not a pleasant look.
Two million dollars in three years.
Three years of $2 million deficit. So if we don't start correcting it now and try and do the best we can to cut, I know it's not fun to cut budgets. I know it's not fun to cut what we need to cut, or look at things that people need or want. But we have to try to balance as best we can for this fiscal year. And I hate to say that, because we can't keep going into a hole down the road and looking at a prediction of three years of a $2 million deficit. And I know it's tough, and it's not going to be easy for you, Patrick, and it's not going to be easy for these department heads. It's not.
And when you look at the picture and you go, I did a study a couple of years ago that showed us about $10 million in the hole over the last 20 years, when it comes to, to constitutional revenue sharing from the state. They, they short us a half million dollars a year. And that's the difference here, you know?
Did you make a motion, Mayor, I'm sorry, on postponing?
I, I expressed my desire, I did not make a motion, I can if needs be. I'm also willing to let anyone else on council.
Yeah. This was a, this was a request of just of one. This was a, this was a request of just of one council member, it wasn't a vote or anything that you did, it was just Ron, that, Mr. Boshaw, that asked for this. So there's nothing formal about it, so it was just for discussion really and to give you an idea of what it would look like. I don't know if this timeline will interrupt anything from Melissa's side of things, because these are hard dates, I believe that she had.
It likely will.
Okay, yeah.
These are just things that if we had seen these weeks ago, it would have been helpful, at this point, there's not much that we can do other than I don't think anyone wants to watch us make a really quick decision right now. I think we've done a lot of that in the past, and I think a lot of people are very upset about that.
I mean, what you handed us, Mr. Jordan, is a start, I like it, I like seeing what we can do to offset that deficit. And I'm gonna throw it back at you again, the department heads, and see if we can do better. I know it's not gonna be easy, I'm just asking you to go back, meet with your department heads, and see if there's just any other little things that we can cut to add up, because it's gonna add up quick.
Yeah, I, I went through and, and looked at notes from previous copies of the budget I've been working from, um, and working with Melissa on. And this is, there's little, there's very little of anything in this budget that's extra.
I mean, if.
What it is is people, people and benefits.
Mm-hmm, you're right.
And that's what it comes, that's, we're looking at seven to eight general fund employees to, to equal the six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
I know if we calculated, if every department head went back and was able to reduce their budget by ten percent, in essence, we would save around close to eight hundred thousand dollars. Could we look at maybe just pushing it a little bit to say if we cut ten percent in each department?
I think our, our, we're, we're, we're thin now, we're down probably fifteen employees from where we were twenty years ago. Maybe more than that, uh, maybe closer to twenty employees. I think everyone is operating, uh, so thinly already, we can't take care of our parks as it is, we can't get to all of them. Uh, we have a revenue problem, not, not a spending problem, and we, we really need to look at, we haven't raised our, our tax levy since Ronald Reagan was president.
Yep.
We have to expand our tax base, we have to, we have to make things that are precious to us, maybe make them available, maybe there'd be a vote of the people to, uh, because of the charter, but, um, we have more parks than, than we can take care of, and we have more parks than probably any, any community in the state per capita. And if we could make them available to a developer to put condos or something up, that would be the housing problem, it would build revenue. Uh, I know people don't like to hear that, but that's, that's what we're faced with.
You're right, we have to just not look at a budget, we have to look at how to bring revenue in, and what are some options out there to bring more revenue into the city? So I do ask to take a look at ideas, I'm not shooting down anything right now, I'm just hearing ideas to bring in revenue. So I do ask if we can come up with a list of other options to bring in revenue within the city, because that's a big concern, otherwise we are constantly being in the deficit.
Yeah, Michigan is, Michigan is a very, very, other states I've worked in, uh, Texas, cities can have a one percent, uh, sales tax. And they generate a huge amount of money from a local sales tax, Michigan doesn't allow that, we have property taxes and we have revenue sharing. And that's really about it when it comes to our revenues. There's nothing really creative that we can do out there, um, our fees are, are set, our fees are really what they should be. We're just in a, we're just in a, in a very difficult position, um, that is a culmination of years. Uh, we have, we have a healthy fund balance because of, you know, personnel cuts that we made twenty years ago. So that's why we have the fund balance that we have, but, you know, to rely on it this year, we could do that, but to continue to rely solely on the fund balance is not gonna work, you saw that, that three-year projection, you know? So, it's gonna be, it's gonna take some, some creativity and probably getting out of our comfort zone. And building our tax base. I'm not gonna mention redrawing the E D, the D D A lines, but that's okay, we'll talk about that issue later.
I was gonna say, on a positive note, I mean, we have, you know, four interested developers that are interested in Esconaba, and this is the start, and I think once the decision is made and what happens here, I think it's gonna start the ball rolling. Because there's other people, you know, waiting in line to see what happens and waiting in line to open restaurants, waiting in line to do other development, and then that's the way you increase revenue, so I'm hopeful, just because of what's happening here down at the jail, it's a start, and I think that it's gonna start the ball rolling, and so I think that we can be positive and hopeful that we'll be increasing revenue shortly.
At this time, I will move that we postpone this, because if I heard correctly, just by sitting back and listening, we've had an immense amount of discussion. And if I were someone sitting out in that chair, I feel like that's what I would have, would have heard, that these are council members who have a lot of ideas, a lot of items to consider, um, some decisions to make, and clearly not a lot of direction at this point, so I would still recommend, I will move that we postpone this, Mr. Demme?
Actually was interacting with Melissa, Controller for City, um, there's two more public hearings to come. Which is, which leads to discussion, so you're not really making anything other than setting a date for that public hearing. And by charter, we have to abide by those dates, so in a way, you still have two more public hearings to come up with this information, I don't think.
Then I rescind my motion and I admonish us to get to work. Moving on to, um, so you wanna, you wanna roll call to set the date, so somebody please move, so we can set the date.
Motion to set the date for the public hearing of the fiscal year of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget for May fifth of twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Mr. Demme, please call, roll.
Councilor Dubois.
Aye.
Councilor Moore.
Here.
Councilor Flah.
Aye.
Mayor Hamel.
Yes.
And before we move on to the next one, Mayor Hamel.
Yes.
We do need to hold the public hearing, so if the public would like to, then we need to close it if there's no no input from the public.
But what?
What public hearing?
We're studying it.
I'm sorry.
Um, yeah.
I'm getting ahead of my, sorry, it's easy to set the public hearing. I apologize, it's easy to do.
It was every bit as long to us as it was to you watching, look at us, all right, moving on to new business, item number two, approval unbudgeted capital funds for security system supporting electrical marina.
Let's move on to some more pleasant things, administrations requesting City Council approval of an unbudgeted capital funds for purchase of security system at the lowest bid and best equipment provided by Hurley Marine at sixteen thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars and implementation of necessary electrical work for installation not to exceed five thousand dollars. Shane is here, the harbor master, um, this has been a long time coming, and, uh, there's been a lot of discussion about it, Karen sits on the committee. And, uh, I'll let you all discuss, I'm sorry.
Evening. So, uh, yeah, it's been a growing concern, we've had, uh, an increase in, um, oh, sorry. It's been a growing concern with, um, boaters and, um, the public in the general area of the marina with, um, just security, people going on to, um, people's boats while they're on them, um, there's been, um, some vandalism, um, and things like that, um, different, uh, future boaters and boaters we have now at the marina, um, you know, are concerned with security issues, last year we didn't, um, have a night watchman, it was, um, I had, um, two apply, one never returned, uh, phone calls, and one, um, resigned the position before she even started, um, so it's hard to, you know, find staff in all levels, and, uh, I think a security system would definitely help negate the, you know, future issues with it.
Most harbors have security systems, we're way behind. And lots of boaters do not come to harbors that don't have security systems. So the, the whole idea is to attract boaters, we're talking about revenue, you know, attracting people to Esconaba, um, encouraging to spend their money here, um, so that's all part of it, and then, um, there was incidents also of people, um, entering people's boats last summer too, so it is, it is a, a problem. And then the other thing is, is that, you know, there's vandalism in the park. And when we, when we, we talked about, um, putting a security system at the marina, I, I made sure that they are gonna get one that can be, um, tied to maybe some cameras in the park. Because I think it's important, and that's, this security system is capable of doing that.
Yes, it easily, with the, um, security infrastructure that's being installed, you can easily add multiple more cameras into that system.
So it would be all tied together, so I think it's a really important thing, and, um, I'm convinced that it can be paid for by increased boaters coming into, um, the harbor and maybe increased boaters paying slip fees, not only for temporary things but permanent things for the summer, so I think it, this is a win-win situation, no matter the way we, any way we look at it.
Shane, when will they be installed if approved?
Um, we would, they, I would get ahold of Hurley immediately, it would be, the equipment would be ordered, um, and then, um, working out a plan right now with electrical. We've got, uh, most of it hashed out for, um, just, it, it's a plug-and-play system, so, I mean, as soon as the electrical work's done, we can hang them up and it's ready to go.
So you get it for this voting season?
Yeah, and start of it, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll also add that Shane's gonna do a lot of the work himself too, so we're saving a lot of money for installation and things like that.
Uh, I've been concerned about the island and about the vandalism on the island, it's tipping over porta potties and stuff like that, and we're gonna, we don't wanna lose our contract that we have with Stenbergs, but it's their, it's their equipment, and there's a light on the pole at the boat launch with a solar batter, a solar system on it, and it's, it's shot, it's old and it's shot, and, uh, been talking with, uh, the electric superintendent about running power, just that far on the island, and putting a couple lights up to, to light the parking lot at least.
Is, is that all included in?
No, nope.
Okay, so that's a completely separate project that won't work.
Well, we can add a camera over there to help with security.
I just wanted clarification, because now we're on the island and I got lost.
It's just vandalism.
So.
It includes a camera to go on the launch.
It does include a camera to go on the boat launch.
Yes, to watch it for.
Now you can see why I get lost.
All right, and it, there should be one going the other way too, actually, a couple of them, but.
Cover it all, so.
Yeah.
Some, somebody, some kids vandalized the mus, those big musical instruments next to Harbor Hideout, and that's just, to me, is a travesty. So, you know, something has to be done, I think people fought cameras for a long time, but I think now people generally going into public places expect there to be cameras, and I think it's just, it's time for us to think about that. But I wanna emphasize that the cameras in the park are separate from this, the only thing is, is that this, it, they can be monitored through the system at the harbor, so that would be determined by public safety and public works on if and when and how they would put cameras in the park.
Right, which is also a separate issue from what you're requesting, correct? Just for clarification.
Yes.
We don't wanna hang all of this on the harbor master.
I'm just curious how many cameras come with the system?
Um, I'm getting six, um, to, and that, we did a layout, it should cover all the needed areas to cover, uh, the harbor master building, each pier, the launch, um, our bicycles which were vandalized last year, um, our shop, fuel dock.
I have a question for, I believe, Mr. Jordan, in the title, we have unbudgeted capital funds, can you please explain that term?
It's, it's, this is an item that has not been budgeted in the marina budget for this current year.
So where would this funding come from?
It would be a general fund appropriation.
So we would add that to the general fund that we're struggling with right now, correct?
Yes.
Just.
Is there money, is there money in your enterprise, in your enterprise fund?
Marina fund.
Is there, is there money in that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we budgeted it last year for that.
That's tight, yeah, it seemed like we did, and it didn't happen last year.
So the Marina fund will cover this and it will not be taken out of the general fund?
No, it won't with the general fund, yeah.
Trust me, I'm, we're saving you right now. Okay, so that money comes out of your budget, so it's not budgeted for that, but there's money in the Marina fund to cover that expense, all of it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it will also cover the electrical work, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the total would be twenty-one thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars, that will come out of the Marina fund and not out of the general fund?
Right, correct.
Okay. I'm all done asking questions.
Motion to approve the capital funds for, I mean, a bunch of capital funds or out of the Marina budget for the security systems and supporting electrical at the marina not to exceed twenty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Support.
Any further discussion on this item? Mr. Demme, please call, roll.
Councilor Dubois.
Aye.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilor Flah.
Yes.
Mayor Hamel.
Yes, moving on. New business, item number three, approval, Leudington Park food, drink concessions for the twenty twenty-two season recreation.
Eighteen bids were mailed out on January sixteen with one bid being received from Sticky Fingers of Gladstone, Michigan. Bids are open March twenty-first, the Recreation Advisory Board met April twelfth and recommends City Council approval of the bid, uh, from Sticky Fingers.
At this point, we are seeking approval of Frank Destraim's bid to vend in the park, and he is specifying territory number two, I believe, beach house parking lot. And he did include a note, which I would like to share with all of you, if given the opportunity to vend this year, will be my nineteenth year that I will service the public in Leudington Park, I will again service the concerts in the park if allowed, thank you for your consideration.
I move approval.
No second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Demme, please call, roll.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilor Flah.
Yes.
Councilor Dubois.
Aye.
Mayor Hamel.
Yes. New business, item number four, approval, sanitation services for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three season recreation.
Two bids were mailed on January twenty-sixth with one bid being received from Stenberg Brothers of Bark River, Michigan. Bids were open March twenty-first, the Rec Advisory Board met April twelfth and recommends, uh, City Council approval of the bid for Stenbergs.
I move approval.
Any further discussion? Mr. Demme, please call, roll.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilor Flah.
Yes.
Councilor Dubois.
Aye.
Mayor Hamel.
Yes. New business, item number five, approval agreement to maintain monument on city property recreation.
The city of Esconaba has been working with the Delta County Trades and Labor to create a monument to labor since twenty thirteen, when the E S K one fifty celebration took place, administration is seeking council approval of a set agreement, the construction, installation, all maintenance and all future maintenance will be the sole responsibility of the Delta Schoolcraft Community Labor Council. This monument will be erected at the municipal dock, and we had a meeting yesterday morning, Monday morning, I forget.
It was cold, I know.
Yeah, it was cold, um, nine o'clock in the morning, to, to pinpoint a location for it, so. So.
I move approval.
Yeah.
Did you wanna describe, did you wanna describe more about the reason and what they're doing?
Well, it's gonna be, if you see the map there, see where that little?
Yeah.
That bump that's out there, that's gonna be right, right in front of there, basically, it's gonna be in front of that area. This has been in the works for, yeah, right there, thank you, for quite some time, um, the, the, uh, what do you wanna call those, those placards that's gonna be on there, they come off of, they came off the old city hall building, and they're probably two feet on the side, they're gonna be two feet by three or four feet long, I think they are, and there's a monument to like, to labor, so they come off the old city building. Um, it's just a, it's not gonna be any cost to the city, we'll maintain it, we'll do whatever, or, you know, so.
Just for clarification, the concrete pad it sits on will also be paid for by the.
Yes. It will be selling papers to offset the cost, so, I mean.
Um, the only question I have is, this was in discussion since two thousand thirteen, what happened from two thousand thirteen to now? That's my question.
I kinda know.
I don't know the answers to that, um.
Does anyone from the labor and trade? Does anyone from the labor and trade wanna answer that question for me, please?
We've been storing the tablets upstairs for a long time.
My name is Mike Parrott. I'm from Rapid River. I've been part of this planning since 2013. Jim O'Toole approached us, had these tablets, and wanted to build this monument over on Rose Park. And we started a plan, started a drawing, and started selling papers. Kind of hit a little bump in the road, but it was a good thing that that happened because last year with the Labor Day Parade celebration, they decided to talk about moving this down to Luddington Park and the municipal dock, which I think is a much better fit. So I'm glad it was a delay. I'm glad it took so long for this to actually come, come around. It's, it's a, the structure is four-sided, it's four by four. There's about 10 feet visible out of the ground. Those tablets are about two feet by three feet. And those tablets depict, there's two different tablets, there's four total, with two different depictions of guys working with tools. One is a mason working with block, and I think one is a guy cutting with a torch. So very fitting for a monument to labor.
And we have them upstairs stored, if you care to see them. They're very, very heavy. You can't really move them. You just look at one of them, maybe, and that's about it.
Can I ask the reason for the municipal dock? What was the reason for the municipal dock and not another location?
That's where the parade was gonna end.
Okay.
And we thought that was very fitting, that Labor Day Parade would end where this monument was gonna be built. And that was where we unveiled the drawing. I don't think you guys have a picture of the drawing of that, but that's where we unveiled that drawing. And that's where we really saw what kind of interest there was in, in this thing being built. And we started really selling, started selling more papers.
Thank you.
We do have a motion on the floor seeking support. We did get a bit out of order with our discussions there. Please excuse the informality on that, but.
I'll second.
I assume there's no further discussion at this point. Mr. Demay, please call roll.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Flock.
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois.
Aye.
Mayor Hamel.
Yes. New business item number six, approval of professional services agreement for city attorney services. Administration.
Pursuant to the city charter, the city manager has engaged attorney Lisa Vogler with LJ Vogler, PLC, her firm, to provide attorney services for the city of Escanaba. Administration is requesting approval of the contract with, with attorney Vogler. And I emailed it to you all earlier today. It'll actually save the budget a little bit. She's charging us less than we were gonna pay Brett Gardner. $51,000 per year in installments of $4250 per month. She'll charge $175 per hour for other ancillary services that, that our city attorney needs to provide, but they're not covered by the retainer agreement. Labor negotiations revolving loan board, those kinds of things. I can. But that's essentially it. I'm excited, I'm excited to have Lisa on board. And that was my original plan, really, was to, was to bring her on board. Other things came along and it complicated it, but here we are at the same end.
Mr. Jordan, for the sake of clarity, could you please explain what the term professional services agreement means? Is it, does that mean contract?
It's essentially a contract. It's a one-year contract.
I feel like we have to be, honestly, specifically on this one, because we're literally hiring an attorney.
I'll read the whole thing if you want me to.
Just so we know what the actual terminology is.
It's a, it's a one-year, one-year contract with a 60-day notice to quit.
From either party?
From either party, yeah. And I think our, our contract with, with Bergman was only a 30-day, and that, that hurt. So we made it a 60-day. She'll be the legal advisor for the city for all officers and departments thereof, all matters relating to official duties, and she'll perform other duties as may be imposed on her from time to time by council, city manager, directors of departments. So she's a, she's a fantastic attorney. I worked with her before. And she's kinda fun to watch in court. Municipal attorneys don't end up in court that often, but their work is different, so.
Mr., you okay? Mr. Jordan, what were we paying Nastoff and Bergman on a monthly fee? Do you recall?
I think it was slightly, either the same amount or slightly more than that. Fifty, might have been $52,000 a year. I, I have to remember, we initially, we, we carved, when we brought them on board, we carved out the duties of enforcing our city ordinances, misdemeanors, and we contracted that to the county prosecutor's office. And so they reduced their, their bid at that time to $50,000. It may not have ever moved from there, so maybe, may have been 50.
I, my major concern with this whole attorney request is the not being physically present at every meeting. The charter itself says they have to be present. And now we maybe need another lawyer to interpret the word "present" to say, what does that define? Does it mean that they can be present virtually, or do they have to be present physically? Because the charter does say "present." And I know that we're looking at what it was when there was an executive order passed during COVID, that the Open Meeting Act kinda changed, which allowed a virtual meeting, virtual attendance. And I believe that was lifted, and.
It was.
Okay, so if that's lifted, this is where I get to the, I'm not a lawyer, is the piece that says "present" now physically.
The, the reason the governor had to lift that and allow for virtual presence was for voting members of bodies that are there to make decisions and vote, and they're not meeting together. Attorney's not a voting member of this body. She's an advisory. So attending by, by phone would be perfectly fine. She's a member of the Michigan Bar, you know, that's, that's the requirement. She plans on being here May 5th for the meeting. Wish it'd be good to have her here, and hopefully she'll have an opinion in her hand or have it already sent out on, on the issue at hand. And I don't, she, she seems willing to, to be present more often than not. So if it's an issue, you know, we can, we can deal with that. But attending by phone, we've all, we've all been through it for the past couple of years. We attend a lot of meetings virtually, and, and you can still get work done, so. That's it.
Do we feel that we could, I mean, I guess I'm asking again, because the charter's very specific, do we need to have it looked at to the wording to say this can be interpreted? I, I'm just, I'm asking, because I don't want, I don't want to come back and bite us in the butt.
No, that's up to the study. I, I think, I've read, and I don't have the ordinances in front of me that, I have to search it out and find it again, that state either the mayor or the manager can excuse the attorney and allow the virtual presence or allow phone presence. Now, that's an ordinance, not in the charter. But there, when the charter was written in the 1930s, I think, too, so. This is the day and age we live in. And the work that, that an attorney does is, it's, it's office work, it's research. And that can be done, that can be done from anywhere. And even, you know, asking an attorney for on-the-spot decisions might get you, might get you bad decisions, too. So if, if they're sitting here, we ask them a question and it require, that requires an answer or an on-the-spot decision, it might not be a lot of time or quality into that decision. So that's, I guess, my spiel.
I'm very confused on that. I'm gonna choose not to comment on that, because I think everybody here understands how time works. I guess I'm disappointed at this point, Mr. Jordan, that, as you've explained very thoroughly earlier when we were on unfinished number one, that we are capable and we have sought legal opinions since we've lost our previous attorney up until this point in time. And it does sound like perhaps we should have a legal opinion on what the term "presence" does indicate as far as participation in a meeting. And it might help us decide whether or not we need to change an ordinance. And being that we absolutely can do that, as you've stated before, I'm disappointed that you, that you didn't do that work and provide that information for us to make the decision tonight.
Well, ultimately, the charter states the manager is responsible for hiring the attorney. That's what I've done.
Correct.
And I've signed an engagement letter with her.
Correct.
This, this board approves the contract. It's a professional services agreement. Our ordinance requires that professional services above $1,000 come to this board for approval. That's simply what it is. It's a one-year contract with a 60-day out. If we're not happy, we can change things down the road. But I think it's very important to bring her on board.
I, I do not disagree that it's important to have a lawyer. I really just wish that you had done that, that work ahead of time so that we would have that information to make an informed decision. Mr. Flock, do you have a comment?
Yeah, how many people have, when you sent out the request, how many attorneys got back to us and said?
None. No one, no one responded, finally, the, it was either, it was either a month or 45 days for the, for the RFP that it was out. No one responded.
So none at all?
Nope. I think two weeks ago, I got a response from an attorney out of Marquette, who I don't, who I don't know.
Except that Lisa Vogler did respond.
She did respond.
So that's more than none?
I'm sorry, well, I approached her, really. She did respond.
I guess, I mean, what I've got here is Lisa Vogler, this is her response to requests for proposals that, here's what I'm confused, Mr. Jordan, is Lisa apparently did respond to this.
She did.
On January 24th. Why is it now, after Mr. Gardner was engaged and then disengaged himself, are we now going back to apparently not our number one choice?
She was my.
And is she gonna be that interested?
Well, she was my number one choice.
Why did we not engage her then?
Some of this, I, I feel a little uncomfortable having this discussion in public when it's, when it's a discussion with an attorney. I don't wanna do anything to damage anyone's reputation. We, yeah, I'm not gonna have that discussion, sorry.
That's fair. You do not have to comment at all. I'm just, I'm just stating that I find it interesting that this response was received in January, and we have stated in council meetings, in, in packets of minutes, that we approve, that we approve every meeting afterwards, that we do in fact need legal advice on so many things. It's been stated this evening so many times, and we could have engaged this person back in January, and we did not. And if there, there are outside issues with that, I, I would have liked to have seen that as an agenda item, and it wasn't. I don't feel very good about this at this point. I don't, I don't think anybody does.
I think we need to move forward, so I move for approval for professional services agreement for the city attorney for Lisa Vogler.
Seeking support?
This is my choice. This is my choice for an attorney.
You are right.
It's very important that, that that's understood.
Seeking support?
I will second.
Any further discussion on this item?
We need an attorney. He has the right under the charter to select an attorney. He does. He does.
Any further?
And, I'm sorry. And, you know, we do have the right as a body to terminate that contract if we feel fit. We do, we have the right to terminate the contract once it's agreed. So when she is coming on May 5th, we do have the right to ask questions. We do have to find out what her intentions are. When are we gonna get these legal opinions back to us that were backlogged? And I think if we feel that she is not fit, then we can terminate that agreement.
Further discussion? Mr. Demay, please call roll.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois.
Aye.
Councilmember Flock.
Yes.
Mayor Hamel.
Yes. New business item number seven, approval closing of the 100 block of South 11th Street for the Radio Results Network Block Party. Administration.
Administration is seeking city council approval on behalf of Mike Daniels from RRN Radio for the closing of the 100 block of South 11th Street for the annual RRN Block Party. Alcohol will be sold and all local requirements and state liquor control requirements will be followed. Date, the event date and time is July 29th from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m., with the setup and teardown at 8:00 a.m. and teardown complete about 12:30 a.m. Department heads have reviewed and signed off their agreement with us, so. This is a really good party.
I can make a motion to approve the closing of the 100 block of South 11th Street for the RRN Block Party, which is scheduled on July 29th of 2022.
I'll second.
Support.
Mr. Demay, please call roll. I'm sorry, any further discussion? Mr. Demay, please call roll.
Councilmember DuBois.
Aye.
Councilmember Flock.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Hamel.
Yes. New business item number eight, first reading ordinance number 1260, allow side-by-side UTV operation on city streets. Administration.
Administration is requesting city council to consider this the first reading of ordinance number 1260, an ordinance to allow side-by-side UTV operation on city streets. Administration is requesting the city council set May 5th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m., 7:05 p.m. For the second reading, public hearing and adoption of ordinance number 1260, traffic safety and recreation committees have both discussed, commented, and recommended passage of this ordinance.
All right, yeah, so I was approached by, by Mr. Jordan to develop a, an ordinance to allow RVs in town. There's plenty of interest for it. I think it's a good idea. So we met with the Traffic Safety Committee, the Rec Committee, and a couple of council, from a committee from the council, developed this ordinance along with the help of an attorney that was helping me out writing this. A few things came to bear on this, why we got to where we are. So we, we kinda took a little bit of a conservative approach. There's, there's two ways that you can do this. Is for us, from a police department trying to enforce this is one, you don't have any side-by-sides, which wasn't an option, or you have the wild, wild west and you let them everywhere. I don't think it's a good option either. So this, most of this mirrors what every other city has on, on age and everything like that. So what we try to do is put some limitations on when and where you can operate the, the side-by-sides. One of the things that came up, I know a gentleman asked the question about four-wheelers and motorbikes, is the thing about side-by-sides, almost all of them are all four-stroke motors. They're rather quiet. If you get into four-wheelers and motorbikes, you, you're gonna now possibly have two strokes up and down our streets, which I live near a trail, and I never hear the side-by-sides going by, but I do hear the motorbikes and the two-strokes going by. And I live 700, 800 feet off the road. So that's why the, the four-wheelers and the, and the motorbikes were, were eliminated from both committees, kinda came to that conclusion. Not saying that we can't allow them into the future, but we took a cautious approach to this at first. And we do have it in there that we can make adjustments, I believe, around the first, first of the year to, to the ordinance, if, if we see fit. It's kind of a trial period to see how this is gonna pan out. The other thing is, is where do we allow them? Primarily, one of the things I looked at is the residents first. You know, the city of Escanaba is where do we allow them? We don't, we, no one really wanted them to have, just be all over the place, so we put the limitations of to and from the trailhead of a residence. So if you're at your residence, you can make your way to the trailhead. If you're coming into town, you can make your way to, you know, gas stations, lodging, and food. The other thing that we tried to consider is we didn't wanna make it unfair for a business on this side of town compared to this side of town. So we tried to, that's why we have it, so you can, you know, if someone wants to come down to the, you know, the end of Luddington Street, they can. If they wanna go to Stevenson. Otherwise, if you tried to develop a map, it's gonna be chaos. You know, you're allowed here, you're not allowed here. It's, that, that would be, for the most part, unenforceable. So that's how we came to the, you know, direct route to and from. And then they wanted access for ice fishing. So that's why. So that's why the ice fishing came in there. You know, maybe we could put a thing in there, the dates from, you know, what is it? December first, they are allowed to go for ice fishing. That could probably be added to the ordinance. Trying to think of anything else on there that we discussed. I think that was yet, because this is pretty much kind of a mirror of the of the state law. The other thing is. In the county ordinance, correct. The the age, you know, everyone was kind of in agreement. We didn't want anyone under the driver's age sixteen and under. There was some concern about permits, you know, if someone has a permit. That was, we had, I double-checked on that and we just left it at a sixteen-year-old driver's license that if you're going to operate on a road, you need a driver's license. Because otherwise, what in theory could happen is someone might have a permit and they could be driving on suspended license. So I checked with the D N R on that, that's why we wanted a driver's license. And so someone can't be riding around with a suspended license with an O R V ticket. So that's how we came to the sixteen-year-old needing a license.
Go ahead. They talked, somebody got up and spoke earlier, I forget the name, about plowing in wintertime. Driveways or whatever. I use mine at my house for plowing to and for my neighborhood. So I don't maybe want to put something in there to.
We could put some in plowing. I mean, working the road, I'm not aware of anyone that I've ever stopped or.
No, I know.
If they're if they're trying to plow, we could, we could add that in there for plowing purposes.
It's discretion on the officer's part, too.
You know, and the other reason why why there are dates in there, those dates mirror when the trail is actually open. The the trail is not open from those dates, that's why we put the dates.
They become snowmobile trails, don't they?
Yes, then it then it basically turns into a snowmobile trail and there's there would be technically no such thing as a as a trailhead at that point.
Just sounds like more work for you, so good luck.
Yeah, we can.
You're not needing a vehicle, are you?
Yeah, we need. I I think it'll be challenging for a little bit, but I I drive them myself. I I have one and the people that I see are very responsible with it. I mean, there's always going to be a few, but that's that's always going to happen.
It's an expensive piece of equipment.
So I I think it'll be a very good thing for the city in the long run.
So I guess if you're looking to make some of the changes that were asked upon for you for this ordinance, you're going to add a couple of things, maybe?
We could add those for the next, if you would like to, if you would like. Phil, did you have the changes on it?
You can, this is fine, this is the first reading, you can, that ordinance can evolve until we actually.
Are you available for input from concerned citizens to make the adjustments needed by the time we have the next reading?
Sure, with as long as.
As long as they call you at the right number and schedule an appointment?
Right, yeah. Yeah, I can, I can, I'm more than willing to have a discussion with somebody. I know that that could get complicated, but absolutely.
I'm trying to channel it as much as I can. They call, schedule an appointment, and just just so, I mean, the gentleman that spoke earlier has some very nicely written concerns that my notes are not going to reflect very well. So I would recommend he bring them to you directly and you guys can work on that.
Okay.
I do agree, I think if it does move forward and you make the changes and goes beyond and approved, I think it should be a yearly review. I think after we've adopted this in any year, let's get the feedback from you. Let's get the feedback and see how it's going because we may need to amend it again or change the ordinance to make it more feasible. So I think it's a good thing to try it out, though.
Yep, I agree.
Motion to approve the first reading ordinance number one-two-six-zero, allow side-by-side U T V operation on city streets, setting the date for a second reading on May fifth.
Second?
Any further discussion? Mr. Demme, please call roll.
Councilmember Dubor?
Aye.
Councilmember Flock?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Hamel?
Yes.
Cool.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. New business item number nine, approval wastewater treatment plant parking lot driveway and approach prep for gravel and asphalt waste. What I'm getting there is.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We're all antsy, we'll get there.
Administration is requesting, A, I'm sorry, administration is requesting City Council approval for monies to complete the work required to build and prepare a parking lot and concrete approaches as part of the work being done at the wastewater treatment plant in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars. Administration is requesting City Council approval for monies to pave the parking lot on the west side of the plant as part of the work being done at the wastewater treatment plant in an amount not to exceed one hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Mr. Lampy?
Good evening, I came very unprepared last time. I didn't know there was concerns or issues with my request. I brought this to you last time, the blue, green, yellow, and the blue at the southern tip. I think it was somewhere around two hundred fifty thousand dollars. You had politely told me to hit the gravel. I'd like to. This was the approach into the into the plant. This asphalt's existing, it's not in great condition. I wanted to replace this asphalt as part of the paving to be the most cost-effective when there's people on site. Mobilization activated. The green is what I'm bringing to you today. I will go into more detail, but that was part of the previous request. The yellow is a road, a service road for chemical deliveries, year-round deliveries of chlorine that we have to have access for. And the bottom blue portion is existing asphalt that should be repaved if if there's monies and then mobilization was there. Again, the yellow has no, oops, I apologize. The yellow is pit run right now, we'd have to reinforce that with pit run and gravel to get our chemicals to the building back there. This is the existing area that I'm bringing to you today. You asked for it to be gravel, I need money to make it gravel. Everything on the on the bottom side here, this has no existing asphalt. We built these new buildings here. You can see that blue line is where the existing asphalt is. Everything south of that blue line has to be mucked out. New aggregate and and backfill. Groundwater is high, the contractors have pulled their dewatering wells. So instead of mucking out all the black dirt and and backfilling, we may have to buy a geotechnical fiber and and lay that down so we can not go in the groundwater and make our our issues more expensive. So this, this, I backed up. This area in blue, again, all of this has to be backfilled and gravelled. There is no access to these driveway, these garages are very limited. This black area here has a limited amount of backfill and gravel to have access to the five-bay garage. The yellow, the red here is existing asphalt, but the majority of it has been tore up or will be tore up due to gas, sanitary, and storm sewer installation. So anything that's up to the west, to the north, is existing. I have photos that I'll show you. This is where we're at for my request today. This is a storm sewer that a kind of bar napkin design. Bob's going to design this with with elevations and slopes and those three are my suggested catch basins for the storm sewer. There's there's more to this than I'm saying. There's there's elevation, there's slope, there's a crossing sanitary and water, so it's not quite as easy as I'm saying. This is a picture of what we have today. You can see the existing asphalt is bird, bird holes, bird bathing. And most of this in the center is where the storm sewer will go. So right here, we have an existing storm for the roof drain and we're going to need a catch basin right about there. And then exist further, pushing further south to combine to the storm sewer that's being installed. This is our new administration building. There is some asphalt there from the previous parking lot. Some of that needs to be dug up and gravelled in order to even have a base for asphalt. What asphalt is there isn't in great condition. Another view of the five-bay and the backer garage. Again, the five-bay has fifteen feet or so of gravel and backfill. The rest of that in front of it where it's pretty muddy is again basically black muck dirt with a little bit of sand overfill. Again, a little closer area to where the asphalt ends and the muck begins. Our gravel base in front of the five-bay garage, this might be a good picture to explain my previous plan of asphalt alone. We were going to make a thickened asphalt edge at the approach. And since I can't get asphalt, I went back with a ten- or fifteen-foot concrete approach. It suggested that on every approach, give a full width of a turn of a truck tire to stabilize the the truck before it enters the garage to protect the concrete. So my plans now are to put a ten- or twelve-foot approach, a six-inch pad, with their wire or rebar reinforcement in front of each one of these. This is our muddy access to the backer garage. We do not have access, we do not have gravel to even get a truck in there. This is our road going east of our new admin building. It has been completely tore up due to our utilities that were installed, sanitary sewer and potable water to the buildings. This is our southern look of our chemical road, our delivery road. Lots of constructions were there, there is pit run. We have been using this road as a as our main entrance and exit for our sewer trucks and chemical deliveries. Often, we've had to finagle our one-ton cylinders back there during construction. But this road is necessary for our chlorine deliveries. A shot this morning of the parking lot again, another shot of our muddy parking lot that isn't there, and this is our our walk path to our employee entrance between the existing brick admin and the newly constructed Clary admin building. We've had to run sanitary, we've ran gas through there. Most of that is obviously gone and that would need to be restored as well. So I'm back to do as you suggested, to gravel it. I've done bar napkin estimates and a spreadsheet. Think I'm looking at around ninety thousand dollars to make the parking lot gravel.
But you're asking under B for the one hundred and ten thousand to pave as well?
You want to go back on it?
Yeah.
Right?
Go back to that. Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, you had A and B in the in the proposal, A, the ninety thousand?
Yeah, A, if council wishes the gravel parking lot to be there, I need money for gravel.
Right.
Because we have for the majority of it right now.
So is the one hundred and ten in addition to the ninety, because you got to prep the base and everything anyway?
The one hundred and ten would be, again, my bar napkin opinion of cost to asphalt strictly the green area once when the gravel is laid is laid down. And I'm looking at a nine-inch base and without asphalt, an additional three inches of of gravel to replace, to have that aggregate base ready and prepped for when and if I'm able to pave the parking lot.
Mr. Lampy, that aggregate base is different in composition than road gravel?
Well, I'm not going to get too technical, I'm thinking it's just twenty-two A or twenty-three A.
Okay.
We have a lot of pit run on site. Some of it is allocated to the project. We would scrape and remove what's what's available, use that as our bottom base and then and then bring it in, the road gravel on top of that pit run.
Mr. Lampy, when you came to council for the paving, you estimated around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Correct.
What, you would have paved everything, every one of these sections with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
That was the intent, to go all the way from the road, all the way back in the blue, the yellow, and the green.
So now you come to us for really two hundred thousand dollars?
Correct.
I was part of his.
Interesting.
The the progress meetings on the wastewater plant all along. And I've never, I worked with a lot of people in a lot of public works and utilities and I've never seen anybody nitpick and manage a project as tightly as Jeff did. And this whole thing, we engaged this company, I forget the name of the company.
STAB.
STAB, out of Wisconsin. And then COVID hit and it added and it just became really a nightmare to to work. For a while, they couldn't work. And it's been kind of a nightmare project and there's been change orders along, some some save us money, some cost money. But, you know, the the bond funds that we had for the for this project, you know, were used up. And Jeff did the best job I've seen anybody ever do managing, trying to manage that because I knew a guy that owned a company and he had a fifty-foot sailboat named Change Orders. You know, that's just how it is, how they make their money. And so you really got to fight with them. They classes and they had classes in change orders, how to submit them and how to make the most account of a project. Not saying that's what STAB did, they did a great job, but it was a very difficult situation, especially with COVID.
I'm I'm disappointed I'm here. I always expected to have extra monies available to complete the asphalt and we just ran out of money.
Yeah.
We ran into problems and I'm forced to spend more. If you were to look at the 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 extra money, I'm one and a half percent over our anticipated costs on fourteen million dollar project. During COVID.
Do you do you often get equipment stuck? Going in, going, I'm just, do you often get equipment stuck going going into or out of the garages or moving things around the property that then requires additional labor and equipment to then pull that out? Does it, has it caused delays in projects?
During construction, we've gotten the backer truck stuck at least two or three times.
I mean, specifically, things that would hinder the daily operations of of the wastewater treatment plant?
Well, right now, we've had a really good working relationship with STAB and they started to do the storm sewer down in this corner down here. They dug up our road, unknowing to me Monday morning. Normally, the the foreman and I chat, we know what's going on. That road was dug up. This access through was, you can't even see, but the access to the east is still sand. We have gotten the truck stuck in the sand on the east side of the irrigation tanks. We don't even try to go through there anymore. Had I known that he was going to dig that road up, we would have moved that backer truck out of there and housed it at D P W. We were fortunate enough that D P W was using the other backer truck and it is currently up north at D P W's garage. Otherwise, we wouldn't have, we would have had to pull that half-million-dollar truck through the sand to get it out to have emergency response. But but normally, our parking lots are not sand. They're asphalt, they're they're built for heavy truck traffic.
Correct.
So we're lucky, again, that that we have a truck up north that's not landlocked due to construction.
So.
Jeff has, I'm sorry.
You were explaining to us that you're going to put a water main in that design? Sorry, can you? Right there?
Well, that that's a storm sewer.
I'm sorry, storm sewer in, right there.
Yeah, right here is catch basin number three. That was just installed today. And again, that's a twelve-inch storm. We're going to run forty or fifty feet to the west, connecting to a a catch basin and prepare it for asphalt so we can drain our water to the storm and out off the property. That is one of the last remaining things we have to build to prepare this parking lot.
So when that is completed, then you would do your next step of either the gravel or the paving?
The the mucking out, the backfilling, compaction, the the gravel. And if if there's monies available or or awarded, hopefully the asphalt later, yes.
What's the timeframe on getting this complete, Jeff?
That's that's tough to say. Our last meeting, STAB was hoping to have their their bulldozer here early April. They were hoping to have. They were hoping to have, I'm sorry, early May. And they were hoping for a, a mid-May paving, which is probably gonna likely be a late May paving. So, you know, the, the clock is ticking and Stab's gonna be looking at paving this quickly because they wanna leave here and move on to the next project by the end of next month or middle of June at the very latest.
I just have one more question, Mayor. So when you came to us with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar paving and now we have a mixture of gravel and paving of a hu- of two hundred thousand dollars, which one's gonna be last longer and which one's gonna be beneficial for you better?
Well, I, I'd like to say there was no mixture in the first, in the first request. The first request was building our parking lot, backfilling, mucking out. Um, you know, I had a two-page memo, I didn't do a good job explaining it. But it was building the base, getting the gravel, you know, with the sand, backfill, and then paving that all the way up to the city street.
Including that access road, correct?
And, well, we had the access in there for paving, part of that two fifty. Um, I was extremely embarrassed that the costs are that high, but I can't control asphalt costs today.
But right, but the road was included, correct?
It was, and I was prepared to eliminate that if necessary and, and try and cut some costs if we could.
That road sounds pretty important. I agree a road is important, I do. You came to us last time for two hundred and fifty, this time it's two hundred. I just didn't see, I mean, to me the logic would be let's go back to the two fifty then. I just didn't understand, you know? It just, I don't know. I'm thinking if, if this is, if we're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars for part gravel and part paving and the two hundred and fifty was paving, everything. But the logic says go back to the two fifty. If this is the cost, if this is the cost estimate, then those-
I gotta, I gotta tell you, there's a lot of spitballing here. Um, I've done a lot of these opinions of cost myself. I've tried to manhandle this project as, as tight as we can. Um, it might be high, it might be low. I'm, I'm hoping that, that two fifty was right. Stab later didn't really anticipate the extent of the work that I was expecting in the green area. Um, doing the concrete approaches is by far the better choice than a thickened asphalt approach. Um, pros and cons. I, I, I didn't think I was unreasonable by going two fifty. I'm simply here today to say I need ninety grand to make the gravel, to make the approaches, um, to finish our construction.
Then, Mr. Mayor, my recommendation would be, Jeff, I would like to get bids then, I need to see the numbers.
I'm, I am unable to get bids in this amount of time to make this work with Stab. They are coming in in two or three weeks with a GPS bulldozer. Um, my, my spitball of costs were to, um, hire them for like five or six thousand dollars to do the grading and hopefully get pain and dolan to do the, the asphalt when they were on site. And if that asphalt wasn't on the table, just to strictly have Stab, uh, finish grading the gravel and walk away.
This would be a change order to their contract?
Basically a change order on the fly work, yep.
We have additional fees included with that then?
Say again, please?
Do we have additional fees included with the change order then?
The, 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 the GPS bulldozer would strictly be T and M. Um, we've done three or four of those
Okay.
where they just pass on their cost and their labor. Um, they spitball like a hundred and ten dollars a, a man hour for labor. And then I'm guessing another hundred, hundred and thirty dollars an hour for the, for the bulldozer.
My concern is, and this is another concern, is two hundred thousand dollars we give you and then you come back to us and say I need another fifty thousand, forty thousand, thirty thousand. And would it be better off just to say here's your two fifty to get everything paved and do as much paving as you can?
That's why I came initially for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yep, it just, the concern was we really didn't have a bid. We didn't have, you're, you're asking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And there was a lot of other concern that was brought up. That was, I'm just repeating what was last council on that. I guess I'd like to hear from the rest of council on this.
So who's gonna do the paving? Or who do you anticipate?
My anticipation is the higher pain and dolan when they come to pave the rest of the, the rest of the project.
So you already have them coming to do some parts of that?
Stab has them scheduled to come in three or four weeks' time, yes.
So in three or four weeks, we couldn't have them come over and say, hey, how much does it do the rest of it?
That's what I've been trying to do. I, and again, I spitballed, um, our bids came back for lead service work at two hundred and sixty dollars a ton. I believe the city has a contract for like ninety dollars a ton. Um, my cost estimate is at two sixty, just in case there's not enough asphalt or enough asphalt in that bid. Um, because that's in the DPW bid, I'm hoping to get that from pain and dolan. Um, Ritter's been out on vacation, I've been extremely busy. Um, I felt spitballing at two sixty a ton was by far the safest bet, if we're talking asphalt.
I'm just baffled that they can't come and give you an estimate. They're gonna come and, and pave this in three weeks. They can't come and, and say, in a week from now, say, hey, we wanna have this done, how much would it cost us to do this? Add it to it.
We, we've got emails from January and December where we were trying to get Stab to do this work. There's been so many shifts and changes in the asphalt plan. Um, this has been probably revision thirty-two, I'm being a little sarcastic. Um, we've trimmed, we've cut, we've tried to make this the most frugal plan we can. Um, Stab initially came back with the change order two hundred and seventy-six thousand or two hundred and ninety-six thousand for, for what all of that colored would have been priority two. Um, when it came back so crazy high, we busted that down into smaller sections. Um, communication between the engineer, between the general contractor, between their subs is an extremely slow process. This has been worked on for a long time. I did not go with the two seventy-six or two ninety-six because it was just too outrageous.
Mm-hmm.
We went back to the drawing board multiple times to try and tighten the numbers.
I have one more question for you, Mr. Lampy. How long have conditions been as we've seen them at the plant? Like what you've shown us tonight, how long have you been operating under these circumstances because of this project?
Well, we started the project two years ago and, and slowly, um, this, this whole road here is being part, put in, this driveway is being put in part of the project, but that used to be the old plant from nineteen thirty-two.
Mm-hmm.
That was demoed. Um, that was demoed at, I'm gonna, I'm gonna blow you away at the cost of this project. Four hundred and sixty thousand dollars it cost a demo. A full demo would have cost eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, through this whole project, I can't tell you all the nitpicks we've saved. Um, the value engineering that Stab worked with us. There's still so much that's not done. In the end, we have a pretty good plant. I hope it functions properly, um, but we've gone two years of construction, two years of walking through sand. The operators are, they're tired. Um, I took pictures of the floors to show you what sand and gravel does.
Mm-hmm.
We're probably the only department that does our own janitorial work. Our operators do the bathrooms, they sweep, they mop. The more sand and gravel we have, the more work they have to do that's not orientated to their mission of clean water or, uh, wastewater. And, and I'm not asking for a janitor, you know, that's just part of what we do. I'm just saying that without the asphalt, we're tracking mud, we're tracking dirt constantly into these buildings.
Can you still do all the asphalt for two hundred and fifty thousand that you talked about at the last meeting?
I, I don't know, I'd have to go back to the drawing board, talk to Ritter, talk to Stab. Um, after last time, I kinda gave up on the whole asphalt and cut down to this green area um, bare bones to get, get what we can in the parking lot, get access to the new buildings we built. Um, the rest if it can wait. The approach in the front of the building, that asphalt's there, it's not in great shape. Um, it's, it's far better than a lot of streets, so I can't complain about it. Um, my plan was to do it all when the mobilization was there at the best cost to the city, when the mobilization happened.
Hmm.
But I would like the asphalt, the green area. Um, regardless if we get asphalt, I need ninety grand for prepping the area to get gravel, to get approaches into the buildings.
Right, so to do the gravel and all of that, as we've discussed, would be the ninety grand and then the hundred and ten, which is two hundred thousand. But then it would only be another, another fifty to put the, i- ideally?
Totally spitballing. Um, those are straight line linear paves. Um, everyone tells me that they're cheaper to do than the fancy corners and stuff for, for pain and dolan. Um, again, I'd have to go back to Chris Beaver, uh, at Stab.
Mm-hmm.
I'd have to get ahold of Tom Ritter. Um, there's a lot of moving parts.
Mm-hmm.
And, and again, I don't wanna be recklessly spending any money. I'm not even asking for the blue and the, the blue paving in the front. We'll gladly keep that and someday down the road, it will be in a bad shape that we'll have to replace. But I'm honestly not concerned about that.
It, can that be a mill and paved or does it need to be rebuilt?
I, I, I'm not even gonna speak on that. I would have to get some paving experts in to tell us what they could do.
Right.
Um, we let the water plant go too, too long at one point. Um, we brought him in to seal coat it. And yeah, we can seal coat it now, but it's gone too far without maintenance. It's not gonna last forever. This won't last forever. Um, we purposely did not seal coat this because we knew we were gonna go under construction. Um, there's been excavators tracking back and forth across that. I, I would, I would speculate we can survive with it for another ten or twelve years, um, without complaint.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the dollar amount for the waste water treatment plant parking lot to add a total amount of two hundred and fifty thousand not to exceed for asphalt lane at the wastewater treatment plant.
Not sure if that's a full approval for approaches and gravel and backfill and fabric and whatnot.
I believe that's being made with the, with the understanding that that's all included in that. That two fifty's used, but instead of going towards this, your original first proposal that came to council, last council for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for paving, okay? I'm changing or amending your mo- your request here to move to paving because that's what your original request was, was two fifty.
I would, I would prefer to get the ninety thousand dollar approval and then allow us to pave to whatever you feel we can afford to pave.
Um, but, uh, okay, I'm good with that too. I'm just concerned for fifty thousand dollars more from your original request, I'm better off just to go with your original request. And that's what I'm trying to amend this original approval.
And I just wanna make sure that I'm not sticking my neck out when I get concrete and gravel and all the other stuff, that that's all understood, that I have the authority to hire and conduct those activities.
Do we have support for the motion?
Support.
Any further discussion on that? Do we understand exactly what is going on here?
I don't think the motion-
Does Jeff know what we're suggesting? Do you understand what's going on here?
I may have to reword it just to make sure that-
I think what we're saying is that we trust what you're doing and we trust your ability and we trust your instincts and we trust your cost-saving, um, acuity. And to, if, if we go with the original amount that you requested last time, that you will use that money to the best of the, your ability to, to make the improvements at the plant. Is that a, is that a, a broad enough statement to?
I, I can work with that.
We're essentially awarding you your prior request.
But the prior request didn't include concrete work.
I, I did not have concrete in there, that's the better-
That's a huge expense.
That is, well, it's, it's, it's ten to twelve thousand dollars for the concrete approaches. It's not a lot of money.
So twelve feet by the length of that garage is only twelve thousand dollars?
That's, that's what I have estimated, correct? Six inches, uh, wire mesh in front of the five bar, uh, rebar in front of the backer garage.
About a two fifty, so.
So I'm just saying your motion doesn't include the concrete work. It was, you just included paving.
Should the motion be amended to state that it's contingent upon all work being done for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less? Otherwise unfortunately we have to ask Mr. Lampy to continue on with his journey of two plus years of struggling. And we have to ask him very nicely to struggle for another year while we wallow through all of this and try to figure out a solution with our budget and perhaps offer to take up shifts stopping by with donuts and sweeping.
No donuts.
Just as a measure of good faith.
Um, what I will tell you is that, is that pit run road to the south, um, that southern blue area, um, those will be the first two cut, um, including that, that blue approach to the front. Um, those will be the first cuts that are, that are gonna be taken if needed. Um, I'm mainly concerned with the green area, um, that, that, and try to do that as frugal as possible.
Any further discussion? We do have a motion on the floor. And Mr. Lampy, you do understand the motion at this point?
No, I think I need to- Sorry.
Apparently TV six is done listening. That's all you get, Chris.
So could you repeat, repeat backfill what I said, cause I may have to amend that?
Sure, uh, you have amend the mon- yeah, money amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete the work required to build and prepare the parking lot. It's pretty broad.
Does that work?
I, I, as long as Melissa doesn't hang me for, for spending money, I'm not allowed to. I, I'm sure she's having a good laugh right now.
Or cry, it could be one of the two.
So my motion stands.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion at this point? Mr. May, please call roll.
Councilmember DuBois?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Flott?
Aye.
Mayor Amel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to no more new business items for you folks. Appointments at this time. Vacancies currently listed, we'll see if I can get it right this time. We're still ironing out kinks in this process. There is one vacancy on the Board of Equalization and Review. There is one vacancy on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. On the Downtown Development Authority, there are three current vacancies. On the Harbor Advisory Committee, there is one vacancy. On the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, there is one vacancy. On the Zoning Board of Appeals, there's one vacancy and one alternate vacancy. Those of you who are here obviously understand how to participate in your community. Those of you at home, if you are interested in making changes in your community and empowering yourself, please sign up to be on one of these boards and serve with us. We do have an applicant for the Downtown Development Authority, Janice Boshow, who submitted on twelve eighteen of twenty twenty-one. And we do have an applicant for the Downtown Development Authority, Jared Ogrin, submitted on the three thirty-one of twenty twenty-two. I would suggest that we appoint them to the Downtown Development Authority Board.
Have you reached out to them to see if they're still interested, being that long ago?
I have not personally. Okay?
Okay.
Um, I'm assuming that Mr. Ogrin, having just submitted at the end of March, it's, it is.
Okay.
Um, they do also have the option to decline if, once they receive that notification. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, we have made some appointments. It's been busy up here tonight. All right. Board of Commission and Committee reports. Okay?
I attended the Housing Commission. Um, new update is they're still working to get the elevator up and running, they're just waiting on some parts. And that's really the only information I have at this time.
All right, Mr. Flott?
I have none at this time.
I was supposed to be at a Traffic Safety Advisory Board and I was inspecting one of my former employee's vehicles for repair work, so I missed it by half an hour, but we must take care of our children. Um, at this time, any general public comment?
Ed Legault, six oh three South Fourteenth Street. Um, I ju- I just wanna say I'm extremely disappointed that we have not come to some sort of a- that we have not come to some sort of a decision on the jail property. I think it hinders the people that are trying to do something to help out the community. And, you know, this was discussed March 17th. And if a critical path item was getting a legal opinion, which I believe, uh, city administration did receive one from the county attorney. But we've, we've come to a professional services agreement with two attorneys in seven days. But as an individual, if I need to get a legal opinion, I call a lawyer and I pay him and give him the information and they give me an opinion. If it was that big a deal that we needed that, or we didn't like the one we received, wouldn't have made sense in the last 30 days to contact an attorney or one that's worked with us in the past and get an opinion. This is important stuff. This is why we don't get revenues in our community. That's why our budget isn't working out. We have to make these things work. That's my challenge to you.
I haven't been here in a few months, but I know I showed up a lot of times because they call it the green rush right now with marijuana. It's doing amazing things from Israel to Africa. Marquette's raking it in, the reservation's raking it in, and we're just leaving that money to rot on the floor and doing nothing with it. And I think that's foolish, and it's a huge revenue stream all over America, and we're just leaving it. Lie. So I mean, if we're really worried about revenues, maybe, maybe you passed it already, maybe you didn't, but you might wanna come right around to that again. And also, if I'm gonna pay a lawyer, Harvard study said in 2002 that if you're gonna watch from a screen, you're not gonna perceive people as anything but two-thirds of a person, whether you think you are or not. So if you're gonna pay a lawyer, it should actually be in the room. That's just my, my thought on that, but that's it, thank you.
Kelly Van Genhoven, Bark River, Michigan. I would like to support Ed Legault's statement on what he said previously about what he believed was that the council had received a recommendation from the county attorney. I have an email from Karen Moore to Patrick Jordan dated March 2nd, 2022, that states, "When we did the last RFQ a few years ago, we received one proposal. We never expected to receive so many wonderful proposals with the current one. The condos and the hotels fit our master plan as the result of the surveys taken with the citizens of Escanaba. All of these proposals fit our immediate needs. Although this does not fit the terms of the RFQ, I would like for you to consider a hybrid proposal. Would you agree to a hotel on the jail property, condos on the chamber property, and the ship, ship museum in a different location? I realize this might require one or more developers to give up one of their sites, but then we could cover and accomplish all in a very short time for a huge impact." Patrick Jordan responded the next day with Brett Gardner's answer, and it was redacted. And when I was asked, or when I was, uh, when I received my FOIA request back, I was told that it was redacted because it was a legal opinion. Thank you.
Steve Cado, 512 South 10th Street, Escanaba. Tomorrow's Earth Day, and I'm probably preaching to the choir here. But all of us have a responsibility to make this third rock from the sun the best home we can make it. If you need suggestions or ideas of what you can do for Earth Day, start by cleaning up your, your yard. And if your yard is picked up, clean up your neighborhood. Or plant a tree. Or use less plastic. Or better yet, get on your web, your favorite web browser and search Earth Day ideas and find something to do. And make not only your neighborhood a better place, make the city of Escanaba a better place, and Earth a better place. Thank you.
I'd like to, if I have a moment, remind everyone that I believe spring cleanup begins May 16?
Escu cleanup begins May 16, it runs for a week until the 21st. I was gonna announce something, but Mr. Jordan took it. I think you owed me one. Any other announcements at this time? I would like to make a comment. Ed, I, I, I understand your passion, and I know these developers have passion too to get this moving. Another reason I, I felt that we didn't need to make a vote is that we have a council member not here tonight, and it would not be fair and just. I would like to move this faster, I agree with you. We probably could move faster with another legal opinion to make sure everything was square and ready to move. I will put pressure to move this faster as I can so we can continue looking at getting this award done to these, one of these developers and proceed with progress. In addition, we talk about revenue. We did approve marijuana dispensaries within the city limits of Escanaba. We are on hold until we do get a lawyer to adopt, adopt a opt-in ordinance, has to be written. Zoning has to be approved. I don't want to delay, if we don't have to delay, once we get our lawyer, let's get that moving too. So then that brings in revenue as well, an opportunity of more businesses moving in within the community. So we have options to move forward during revenue. The delay has been the attorney. The delay, the, the delay has been. And right now, I think if we are moving forward with this attorney, it's gonna be a lot of pressure on her to move quick and effectively for this city. I will absolutely entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Thank you.